To locate poles, wires, cables and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Franklin Street. Relocate one solely owned pole numbered T dot five dash one to a point on the northerly side of Franklin Street approximately three hundred twenty feet easterly from the center line of Clinton Street. Reason is for the relocate one solely owned pole on Franklin Street at the request of an abutter and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. Mr. Bonner, thank you for being with us tonight. I know we had some confusion on finding someone that was responsible for this petition and we appreciate that we were able to clear that up and that thanks to the clerk and their cooperation as well.
My pleasure.
If you could just, let me just ask, will you be the representative for the most part for Verizon in the future?
I certainly can be. I'm the one that they contracted to design this petition, so I can certainly speak to it.
Or if you don't, as long as when there's a petition that comes in, if you can be sure the clerk has a contact person for that petition?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to give us a little background on this petition?
Sure, I can give you what I know. It appears that the abutter at thirty seven Franklin, the one whose building is located directly behind the pole, contacted Verizon and asked them to move it over to the property line so they could have better use of their property. So we just moved the pole itself, I think it's fourteen feet to the right closer to the property line of thirty one, so to get it out of the middle of the property of thirty seven.
Okay, so the artwork says to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. There's no, there's no special meaning to that? It's just the fact that that follows the pole? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's standard writing, just to say that it's going to be used for fiber optics and it's going to be used for whatever, and anything that the town or the city wants to use for translating various information.
All right.
It's what it's currently used for.
Okay, so you're saying this is moving fourteen feet? Is it going towards another property?
It is. It's moving towards the property line for the next door neighbor thirty one, but it's not going to be put on the next door neighbor's land, or I'm sorry, it's still in the right of way, but it's not going to be put over on the other side of the property boundary. It's going to maintain staying in front of thirty seven, just moving it out of the way so that they can have, I guess, better Feng Shui.
So there's no objection from the neighbor?
None has been heard.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Let me go to the council and see if there's anybody that has any questions regarding this petition. Go to the committee first.
I'll set clear.
All right, thank you. Let me go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience, listening audience, that would like to speak in support of sixty seven dash twenty? Again, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak in support of sixty seven dash twenty? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of sixty seven dash twenty? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to sixty seven dash twenty? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to sixty seven dash twenty? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to address the council on sixty seven dash twenty? If not, I'll declare the public portion closed. Mr. Bonner, just, and it's not directly related to this, but it could be. We had, one of the reasons we were looking for a contact is we did have a couple of requests through the ward two counselor on policy cleanup after a pole is put in or after branches are cut, you know, for wires. We did ask National Grid for what their policy is in terms of work that's performed and how it's left after, and that's where our original search for you was to find out, I wanted the policies of both of you because most of the poles are jointly owned. So if you could, if you could do that for us, just to tell us, you know, once you either trim the trees or you move a pole, if there's any left to do left, you know, how you handle it and what your obligations are?
The obligations are to install the new pole first, attach the wires, remove the old pole, and leave it as clean as possible.
Okay.
It is not supposed to be, it's supposed to look relatively new. As far as tree trimming goes, I don't believe any is necessary for here.
Okay.
So it's just the fourteen feet and there's no trees in the way.
It might, it might not be necessary for this one, but we did have a complaint from an elderly gentleman that precipitated the comments to get a policy statement from both of you. So, you know, if you trim the trees and just drop it, some of the elderly people cannot dispose of those, and that was kind of a concern. So if we could make a note of that and just give us a policy of what you do in writing, doesn't have to be long, just let us know what you do after you do maintenance, then that'll be, that'll be fine.
Okay, you have, do you have, do you have an address I can send that to via email?
You can send it right to the clerk, that would work, and she'll take care of it for us.
Okay.
She has your contact information, Mrs. Caitlin, do you have this contact information?
I don't, but I have Albert's. If I get in contact with Albert to let him know, would that work for you or?
Yes, Albert is who I would be going to anyway.
Okay, no problem.
All right, and thanks for your cooperation. Sorry about the misunderstanding. I'm glad we had it cleared up. Okay, just one more time with the council, does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the six forty-six interviews.
Yep.
Hey, yes, thank you very much. All set?
Yes.
You may proceed, yep.
All set, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, I know we have several of these individuals on the line already. I'm going to read the names and please identify yourself as I read your name. Luis Massa, Luis Massa on the line. Jason Reagan.
Here.
Harry Quarles.
Here.
Darlene Quarles, here. Lisa Delorme, here. Marcy Rothenberg, here. Pamela Sullivan.
Here.
Ayaz Ahmed. Ayaz Ahmed. Okay, so we're missing Luis Massa and Ayaz Ahmed. Okay, so what we're going to be doing here this evening, thank you very much for calling in. Usually we would have our volunteers come down before us in the council chambers, but as everybody knows, this is a different time, so we're doing virtual meetings and we're interviewing by phone. Since all of you have volunteered for the same operation, the Emergency Management Operations Unit, we're going to be interviewing you basically all at the same time, all as a group. So what I'll do is I'll go down with names and I will ask each person to introduce themselves and then just give a very, very brief, maybe thirty seconds or so, explanation of why you're interested in joining our operations unit for the OEM and, you know, how you feel as though you can contribute. So, and as a way of introduction, my name is Gail Feckley, I'm the Ways and Means Committee's Chairman, and we'll just be doing this and then have the committee, see if the committee has any questions for you and then the council. Okay, so let's start with Jason Reagan. Jason, can you just give us a little background in why you are interested in volunteering?
Hey, I'm Jason Reagan, I'm born and raised in Leominster, Massachusetts, spent most of my life, except like five years maybe, where I was in Memphis and Worcester. I've always wanted to give back to my community. I'm a realist in the area too, and I, I was actually listening to something, a podcast at one point, I was like, hey, time to give back, and it resonated with me to help out the people, so I actually called OEM and asked how I can help out. I've been delivering lunches and doing the phone since. I got a business background that can help out with anything needed, but just I'm, basically anything the town needs, I'm here to help out for manual labor or anything else, just want to help.
Great, that's great. Even manual labor is very important, James, Jason, so thank you very much.
It is. I remember.
That's right, and, you know, not everybody can do it, so if you can, that's great, that's a benefit, that's definitely a very important benefit. So thank you very much. All right, Harry Quarles.
Yeah, hi, this is Harry Quarles, living in Leominster, retired, married to Darlene Quarles, who I still speak next to. My wife and I are retired now, we were looking for things to do to help the community. We're involved in the delivery of school lunches to the children in Leominster, which we enjoy immensely.
That's great.
And we're able to do other things as needed, and like Jason, we just want to give back to our community and that's just all we can.
That's wonderful, that must be so much fun giving the lunches out. You must see a lot of happy faces.
It is.
That's great.
We see a lot of happy faces, yeah.
I bet you do. And Mrs. Quarles, you're right there, so you have basically the same, you do the same thing for the community with your husband?
I do, this is Darlene Quarles, I've been working with emergency management since, I think, late March, maybe early April. I too have been working on the children's delivery route, and we love giving back to our community. We're recently retired, and it just, this resonates for us. It makes us feel that we're doing a job that needs to get done, that many people do not have the time or the inclination to do, and we just, we love it.
Yeah, well, we're glad that you have the time. We're glad that you have the time and that you're willing to give the time, and certainly we're glad that you have the inclination, so thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Delorme.
Hi, my name is Lisa Delorme. I've lived in Leominster for four years. I was so excited to move into this community. I've always liked all the events and so forth that they do to pull the community together. I was furloughed and I saw Mayor Dean on Facebook looking for volunteers, and I thought, oh my gosh, I've always wanted to volunteer. I went down and spoke with the director, and I knew that this is what I needed, what I wanted to do. I raised my family, and now it's my time to do what my dream has always been, is to volunteer and give back to the community.
That's great, Lisa, you know, you've turned something that's not very pleasant, being furloughed, into something that, you know, could be very rewarding, so that's excellent, excellent opportunity for you, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Marcy Rothenberg.
Hi, I'm Marcy, and I've actually moved to Leominster about a year and a half ago. And to me, in general, it's pretty basic. When you are in a community, you can just live in the community, or you can be part of the community. Being part of a community means neighbors helping neighbors. I've always believed that regardless of what state and what city I might live in. So currently, I'm part of the meals delivery team, but I believe in volunteering for numerous organizations, but I'm really thrilled to be part of the Office of Emergency Management. It's a great team, I've gotten to know some wonderful people. I know you can't see the other parts of the group here, but we've become a real qualitative team, and I'd certainly like to continue being part of it.
That's great, and then that is one, that is one, you know, kind of bad thing about all of that, I mean, there's a lot of bad things about all of this, but, you know, that we cannot greet our volunteers, you know, we always have usually such a good time interviewing people when they come down to see us, but this is the next best thing, so thank you very, very much, and certainly, you know, when you move to a community, that's a great way to meet people, volunteering, and I'm glad that we're working out for you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Pamela Sullivan.
Yes, I'm Pamela Sullivan. I've been living in town since nineteen ninety-one. I've been delivering mail in town from ninety-two to two thousand and sixteen. I'm another one of the lunch bunch, and my best qualification is I know where every street in town is.
Wow.
It's turned out to be a real help when we're trying to find some of those addresses. It gave me a little bit of a unique qualification.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, we are at seven o'clock, so I'm going to open the meeting and then we'll recess and return to this as soon as we do. So I'd invite everybody to rise and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, free, and just for all. Okay, I'll begin with a roll call of the counselors in attendance. Counselor Frida?
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Present.
Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
Present.
Counselor Feckley?
Present.
Counselor Angelini?
Present.
Counselor Aringer?
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Counselor David Cormier?
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. All nine members of the City Council are present and in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, and I find them to be in order and access to be placed on fire.
Very well, thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion to recess.
Take a motion, Mr. President, Counselor Cormier.
Counselor David Cormier moves to recess. Is there a second?
Second, Counselor Angelini will second.
If there's no objection by any counselor, we are now in recess. Okay, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means can continue with the interviews.
Thank you very much. So I was just wrapping up with Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, yeah, I mean, I don't think that we can belittle that point that you know a lot of the volunteer community, so that is in and of itself a big benefit to an emergency personnel, so, so thank you very much for your volunteerism and...
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to call and see once more if we have Luis Massa or Ayaz Ahmed on the line. Okay, seeing that we do not, I am going to move on to the committee. Counselor Frida, do you have any comments or questions for our group?
Mostly just a comment, I think it's a great, a great variety of volunteers. I love the fact that there's a husband and wife team that can really get into it. And Pamela Sullivan, I remember we had Dennis Shad as a council a year ago.
Yes, you did. An old friend of mine.
He didn't remember anybody's face, but he knew everybody's house.
We do.
It's definitely a great quality to have, and, you know, the lunch, I guess there's so much, something that can, emergency is probably the best way to declare it, and something can happen tomorrow that nobody ever thought would happen, and delivering lunches for little kids is probably, not just little kids, but probably one of the most rewarding things that had to be done. Emergency management is going to be such a big place in the community in the future with possible regionalization, and we just have such a great reputation that this, we're all such a good group of people to be joining, so thank you for that, and I would say with the voting for you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, all set, Counselor Frida?
I am, thank you.
All right, Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes, just echoing Counselor Frida's comments, a wonderful group of people, and I do want to thank everyone for volunteering and for their time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other counselors have any comments or questions for our group? Okay, hearing none. I want to thank each and every one of you for calling in tonight. As Counselor Frida indicated, you know, it's a great mix of experience and volunteerism. I think if we had you all together, we would have had a lot more fun, but it is what it is, and, you know, to have so many of you volunteering at this time is very, very important, you know, amongst the pandemic, but also something, you know, the act of God, like last week when we had two tornado warnings, I mean, luckily, they didn't come to fruition, but if they had, we were going to need all hands on deck, so it's wonderful that we have all of you, you know, ready, willing and able. So thank you so much for calling in tonight, and we will be confirming your appointments later on in the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you, you also.
Thank you, Counselor Feckley. We now have a public hearing scheduled at six fifty-four PM with the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I'd like to open the public hearing. This is C dash eleven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that the attached loan order be adopted. This is regarding the demolition, site surveys, asbestos removal for the police station and the amount of two million dollars, and I will first read the loan order. Ordered that two million dollars is appropriated to pay costs relating to the construction of a new police station, including but not limited to demolition, site surveys and asbestos removal, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. Said to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Law Chapter forty-four or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor and the treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project in this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bond or note approved by this vote, unless any such premium applies to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to this payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Master General Law Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. So I think we all know, this is pretty self-explanatory, what this is regarding, and it should be noted that it is possible that all of this type of work that has been mentioned here may not cost two million dollars or likely will not cost two million dollars, but they want approval or authorization to spend up to that amount because they don't know the exact dollar amount, and they don't want to have to keep coming back to the City Council with an additional loan order. It's a very tedious process, and it just would make no sense to do that, so they're asking for authorization up to that amount, and of course, they will use what they have to to get the work done, and then the rest of it will just, you know, not, not be used. So it would be my position to ask the other members of Finance if they have any questions regarding this, and then I'll go to the other members of the City Council, and then I'll go to the public. So I'll start with Counselor Pauline Cormier. Do you have any questions or comments regarding this loan order?
I don't have any questions. I would support this as well, we're heading in the right direction, let's keep going that way, so I would support this.
Okay, Counselor Angelini? Counselor Angelini, you on the line?
Counselor, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, can, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, anybody that drives by the site, I'm sure it's, they've noticed the considerable amount of work that's going on there, demolition and site work, and we certainly have to pay for it, so I would be supportive of this loan order.
Okay, is there any other, the City Council that would like to speak at this hearing regarding this loan order?
Yes, this is Counselor Frida.
Counselor Frida, go ahead.
This is right on the money. This land really had its challenges, I can tell you. From the demolition to the surveys, the asbestos removal. If you notice from the time we announced that we had purchased the land, the time that we actually got it cleared, those buildings were up a long time. I mean, there was some major asbestos issues that we had to deal with. And now we're trying to deal with compensatory storage for floodwaters. And there's, you know, we're fortunate to have Patrick McCarty and Jim Whitney on the Committee and looking at different aspects of the property that could kind of answer some of those questions that aren't quite visible today. So this is really very important. We've been working at it a long time. And I think there's a real thought that it's not going to be two million. But it's, as you said, Mr. Chairman, rather than come back and ask for another hundred thousand dollars in increments, it doesn't make sense. So anything that's left over can be applied towards the station. So I would encourage the Council to support this.
Thank you very much, Council Frida. As a member of the Police Building Committee, we appreciate that. Any other members of the City Council have any comment regarding this loan order at this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the public. If there are any members of the public that are on the line that would like to speak in favor of this loan order, please state your name and address for the record. And you can speak. Once again, would anybody else from the public like to speak in favor of this loan order? And for the third time, would anybody from the public like to speak in favor of this loan order? Would anybody like to speak in opposition of this loan order? Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak in opposition of this loan order? And for the third and final time, would anybody from the public like to speak in opposition of this loan order? Okay, seeing none. Is there any other final comment from anybody on the City Council? If not, Mr. President, I would ask that we close the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Council Cormier. We'll now conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the Council President, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? Hearing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, and we'll start with communications from the Mayor, appointments.
Measure confirming the Mayor's reappointment of Yanis Ramudis Camp to the Housing Authority, term to expire for fifteen, twenty twenty five.
That appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course. And I would ask the City Clerk to invite Mr. Ramudis Camp to our next meeting for an interview.
Okay.
Is this a reappointment or not a reappointment?
It's a reappointment.
Oh, if it's a reappointment, then no interview, no interview needed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Feckley. We'll now move on to orders, starting with C twelve.
C twelve, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of seventeen thousand three hundred fifty dollars be made to the election and registration expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Regarding schools are requiring a deep clean if used for election days, School Related Care Act reimbursement is undetermined at this time.
C twelve would be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very good. C twelve is given regular course. Petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with seven dash twenty one.
Seven dash twenty one, John Dombrowski, Councilor-at-Large, request to amend Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash seven, to read the following. Install stop sign against eastbound drivers on Birchcroft Road at Comstock Road.
Petition seven dash twenty one is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent for the Leominster Police Department. And we do need to schedule a public hearing as well, so I would refer to the clerk as to the best time to do that.
I would recommend August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, at six fifty two P. M.
Acceptable, Council Dombrowski?
Yes, Mr. President, if we could just vote on that hearing date and time.
Okay, so the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs is to give seven dash twenty one regular course and schedule a public hearing on August twenty fourth at six fifty two P. M. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of scheduling seven dash twenty one for a public hearing on August twenty fourth at six fifty two P. M., please say yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, seven dash twenty one is given regular course, and a public hearing is scheduled for August twenty fourth at six fifty two P. M. Moving on to eight dash twenty one.
Eight dash twenty one, Thomas F. Arndinger, Councilor-at-Large, requests that a mass DOT approved slow, dangerous curve sign be placed on the westerly side of Grant Street, a hundred feet plus or minus from the northerly intersection of Imperial Avenue and Grant Street.
Eight dash twenty one is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent for the Leominster Police Department and the Fire Chief. And we'll need to schedule a public hearing, I imagine, eight, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, at six fifty three P. M.
Yes.
Is a good time?
Sounds like the clerk agrees. You've heard the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs to give eight dash twenty one regular course and schedule a public hearing on August twenty fourth at six fifty three P. M. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Frida?
Through the chair, through the Chairman of Legal Affairs, could you just check, add DPW on there as well? I don't believe Grant Street is a mass DOT approved street, the country road. So that might be just some language that shouldn't be in there.
Okay, I think that's a good point, if we could add that to the list of referrals, Mr. President.
Very well. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, once again, eight dash twenty one. The recommendation is regular course for the referrals to the Traffic Bureau, the Fire Chief, and DPW, with a hearing to be arranged on August twenty fourth at six fifty three P. M. All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Is anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, eight dash twenty one is scheduled for a public hearing on August twenty fourth at six fifty three P. M. Matters before the City Council, starting with the City of Leominster financial report. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. We began the fiscal year on July first, twenty twenty, with fourteen million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents in the stabilization account. After free cash was certified and pending the items that are on there that we've spent or will spend if they are approved, we will have spent one hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And that will leave us a balance in the stabilization account of twenty-one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that is a financial report.
Any questions on anyone? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Finance, starting with C dash seven. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash zero seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests to authorize the City of Leominster to establish the Frankie Fortuna donation account to enable the city to accept grants and donations related to renovation of the Johnson Street Skate Park. You have a letter here from the Mayor dated July twenty first, twenty twenty. Dear members of the Leominster City Council, I am writing to ask for your approval of the establishment of the Frankie Fortuna Skate Park donation account. As you know, the city has applied for a grant through the park program at the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for improvements to the Johnson Street Skate Park at the corner of Johnson and Carter Streets. If approved, the grant will provide sixty-eight percent of the cost of this project. Frankie's friends and family have raised fifteen thousand dollars toward the cost of the project. We have many skateboarder and bike enthusiasts that are pursuing other private donations, including skateboard and bike-related private grants. This fund would allow us to track and organize any private donations that come into the project. I would appreciate your consideration of this request. As many probably know and remember, unfortunately, Frankie Fortuna is a young man in the community who sadly lost his life on the side of the road on Mechanic Street years back near the Johnny Row Park. And, you know, as the letter states, a lot of his friends and family members have gotten together and would like to do something positive for the community in his memory. And his passion was, you know, skateboarding and those types of outdoor activities. And so they've obviously have raised a lot of money and have some plans for the future as well. And I'm hoping that we can see this to fruition and get, you know, all the grants that are required so that we can make those improvements. And it certainly would be my position to grant this petition. I'll ask you, poll members of my committee.
Very well, Council Pauline Cormier?
Yeah, I would agree with Council Cormier on this. This is a, this is a great family, a great young man, and I think this is just a way to pool resources and just an easier and more effective way to get things done and keep this project moving forward. So I am fully in support of this.
Thank you, Council, and Council Angelini?
Yes, I'd be supportive as well, Mr. President.
Very well, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seven. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Council, Mr. President, this is Council Schalfo Zephyr. I do have one comment. I am fully in support of this and had asked, with due weeks, you know, the city's grant writer about this, I had a couple of questions from a constituent. And privately, people supporting this project have already raised over fifteen thousand dollars, which I was really, you know, pleasantly surprised and really impressed by. So I'm more than happy to support this. I know the people throughout the city are working hard to raise money for this project.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida?
Yea.
Council Dombrowski?
Yea.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Feckley?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Arndinger?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
And Council David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero, C dash seven is passed. Moving on to C dash ten. Does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. C dash ten, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars be made to the landfill capping expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We do have a letter here from the Mayor dated July twenty third, twenty twenty. I respectfully request that an appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars be made to the landfill capping expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. There is some capping. This is regarding landfill capping repairs. We do have a letter here from Christopher Knuth as well, dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty. Just a quick explanation, this is regarding the appropriation request for additional funds to complete the repairs of the Mechanic Street landfill. The Health Department respectfully requests an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to complete the necessary repairs of the Mechanic Street landfill. When the construction phase of this project began, conditions encountered below the surface of the landfill were found to be different than what had been proposed. The depths and types of soils found were different than what had been permitted. Subsidence and erosion beneath the cap are suspected as the reasons for these current existing conditions. The conditions were reported to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and a proposal to use stone riprap over the areas was issued. M. A. D. E. P. then deemed this to be a major modification to the original design plans. Unfortunately, this required a lengthy preparation of a major modification submittal. F. D. E. P. took several months to review on this and comment. Eventually, the submittal was accepted, and we can now move forward completing the necessary repairs. Our consultant, Woodward, and Curran, used the remaining funds left in the engineering budget to complete the task described above. That money was slated for construction inspections, consulting with contractors, and to prepare the final completion documentation as required by the Mass. D. E. P. This is the reason for our appropriation request. So, you know, obviously, with Mass. D. E. P. involved, you know, these are repairs that the City of Leominster has no choice but to make. So it would be my position, Mr. President, that we grant C dash ten, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Council Angelini?
Subsidence issues at former landfills are quite common, so I would be supportive of this as well.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash ten. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote. Council Frida?
Yea.
Council Dombrowski?
Yea.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Feckley?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Arndinger?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero, C dash ten is granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, give me one moment. I have so somewhere here. Ordered that the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars be appropriated landfill capping expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida?
Yea.
Council Dombrowski?
Yea.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Feckley?
Yea.
Council Angelini? Council Arndinger?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C dash eleven, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash eleven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the attached loan order be adopted. We did have a public hearing this evening, and Madam Clerk, I don't have to read this again, do I, if somebody is okay with me waiving the reading?
No, because you read it the first time, you don't have to read it again the second.
Okay, so there's no objection, then. I will not read the loan order again, but I will summarize. This is two million, the two million dollar loan order for the site work that has happened at the police station, things that are including but not limited to demolition, site surveys, and asbestos removal, including the payment cost of incidental or related thereto. We did have a public hearing this evening. Nobody from the public spoke in favor or against, but it would be my position, Mr. President- President, to grant C-11, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
And Counselor Angelini?
In agreement as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-11. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arninger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. C-11 is granted. And we now can move on to 4-21. Is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, 4-21, Gregory C. Chapdellane Purchasing Agent, requests to allow a contract for energy consulting services for the city for a five-year period. This is in preparation for the next services contract that the city will be bidding out this year beginning in August. The current contract will expire in August. We do have a letter here from Mr. Chapdellane dated July 14th, 2020, and it is signed by Greg Chapdellane, Ray Racine, Roger Brooks, and Jake Fleming. Those are the three individuals are from the DPW. Dear Honorable Members of the Leominster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for energy consulting services for the city for a five-year period. This is in preparation for the next services contract that will, the city will be bidding out this year beginning in August. The contract will expire this August. Per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, he can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass a majority of people vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. The city has been entering into a services contract for energy consulting services for several years now, with this arrangement working to the city's advantage. As can be expected, the potential of having to change consultants every few years can be disruptive to city operations. For this reason, the DPW business manager would like to move to a longer contract period in order to minimize disruptions as well as capture the pricing advantages of a long-term that a long-term contract can bring. This action must be voted upon now as the purchasing agent prepares to issue the new bid, since it must be known what the time period of the contract length we will be able to structure the bid around. We would respectfully advise that the city council vote in favor of allowing the energy contract consulting contract to cover a five-year period. So, you know, I did have a discussion with Chapdellane, and, you know, obviously as stated, it saves, it causes a lot less disruption when you have that continuity with these types of contracts. They've had, they've gotten their feet wet with this particular type of a contract already for a couple of contracts now, and they're ready to be able to understand what the city needs long-term and put it out there for a long-term, a longer-term bid. So after discussing this with Mr. Chapdellane, it certainly would be my position to grant 4-21, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
I would agree as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant 4-21, or is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arninger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. 4-21 is granted. Moving on to 5-21, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, 5-21, Gregory C. Chapdellane Purchasing Agent, requests to allow a contract for payroll services for a six-year period. The current contract will expire this December in anticipation of this expiration. Once again, we have received a letter from the purchasing agent, the Chapdellane, dated July 14th, 2020. Dear Honorable Members of the Leominster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for payroll services for a six-year period. Current contract will expire this December, and in anticipation of this expiration, I am in the process of preparing an invitation to bid to secure payroll services for the next six years, said services to begin January 1st, 2021. Per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to less than three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said city council, said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. Past practice has been that the city issue a contract for these services for a six-year period during the last four contract periods. Payroll services cover the issuance of all employee payroll checks, required documentation, and year-end tax reporting, as well as the related bank services for processing the weekly payrolls. The payroll operation of the city is complex. Implementation of new software and related training often results in a long lead time to bring all departments up to speed. As such, it is more advantageous from a price point of view to enter into a long-term contract for this particular service. This petition must be voted upon now as I prepare the new bid, as I must know what time period and contract length I will be able to structure the bid around. I would respectfully advise that the city council vote in favor of extending the payroll contract, payroll services contract term to cover a six-year period. Once again, I had a discussion with Greg Chapdellane today. The city's been doing this for a few, four contracts now at least, for that type of service, and it has worked out very well, been very efficient, and saved the city money. And it would be my position to grant C-21, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant 5-21. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arninger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. 5-21 is granted. Moving on to Legal Affairs, in 1-21, is the chairman ready to report? Counselor Dombrowski?
Sorry about that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Mr. President, unless there's an objection, I suggest we take Petition 1-21 and 2-21 and block.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Petition 1-21, David Arcomier, request to install a stop sign against southwestbound drivers on Comstock Road at Birchcroft Road. And Petition 2-21, David Arcomier, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-34, to read the following: No parking on Albert Drive, both sides for the entire length. These matters are scheduled for a public hearing on August 24th, 2020. Petition 1-21 is scheduled at 6:53 PM. Petition 2-21 is scheduled at 6:54 PM. Given those circumstances, I request further time.
I think we have a slight technical glitch here. Did we not schedule, not your fault, but did we not already schedule 8-21 at 6:53 PM this evening, earlier? Madam Clerk?
I believe we did.
We can swap that right over to 6:51 PM.
Which one are you moving? 1-21, right?
8-21, yeah.
Oh, we already voted on 8:21, so we haven't voted on 1-21 yet, so would it make sense to do 1-21 at 6:51 PM?
We voted on those at the last meeting.
Oh, can we revote it?
Sure.
All right, so if you don't mind, Counselor Dombrowski, the recommendation could now be amended to scheduling a public hearing. Has that been advertised already, Madam Clerk?
Those two, no, not yet, we waited.
Okay, so if that hasn't been advertised, then I would recommend, if it's okay with you, Counselor Dombrowski, that we schedule the public hearing on 1-21 at 6:51 PM?
It works for me, Mr. President.
Okay, so you have, I will check with members of your committee. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm in agreement with that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, so the recommendation, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give further time to 1-21 with a public hearing on August 24th, 2020 at 6:51 PM, and further time as well on 2-21 with a public hearing as well on August 24th at 6:54 PM. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of establishing those public hearing dates and times, as well as giving those petitions further time, please say yea.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? I have a vote of nine to zero. 1-21 and 2-21 are both given further time with public hearing dates on August 24th, one at 6:51 PM, and on the latter, Petition 2-21 at 6:54 PM. Moving on to Public Service, is the chairwoman ready to report?
President, may I?
I am, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Cormier?
As usual, I will be recusing myself from 67-20. That is, that equipment will be owned by my employer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. I'm sorry, Counselor Frida, you may proceed.
No problem. 67-20, Verizon New England Incorporated, request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures, to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Franklin Street, relocate one safely, one solely-owned pole, number chief dot five dash one, to a point on the northerly side of Franklin Street, approximately 320 feet easterly from the center line of Pleasant Street. The reason is to relocate one solely-owned pole to Franklin Street at the request of and of butter, hence advised of the distribution of intelligence and communication. We held a public hearing tonight. We had a representative from Verizon explain what was going to happen, and we had no comments from the public. And I will ask you to check with the committee, but I would, my recommendation would be to grant.
Very well. Counselor Feckley?
I agree.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 67-20. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arninger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. 67-20 is granted. Moving on to Ways and Means, and starting with C-6, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C-6, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to authorize the City of Leominster to pursue nineteen thousand six hundred and six dollars through the United States Department of Justice JAG program. This was on our calendar last time and given regular course. We have communication from the mayor of July 17th, which I will read into the record. Members of the city council, I'm writing to ask for your support of a petition to allow the City of Leominster to pursue nineteen thousand six hundred and six dollars through the Department of Justice JAG program. This amount represents our annual allotment of funding. The Leominster Police Department intends to utilize this funding to support continued community policing efforts and equipment purchases. The grant requires notification and subsequent vote of the governing body, in this case, the Leominster City Council, before the grant can be submitted. I hope you will support moving forward with this application. So this is something that comes before us on an annual basis. These are funds that, as it says, are given to the city by the Department of Justice. Leominster Police Department, I'm sure, in this time could very well use the funds for, again, continued community policing and equipment purchases. So my recommendation would be to grant C-06, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I'm also in agreement.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-6. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
I know you're out there.
Yay.
Yep. Counselor Arninger?
Okay.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. C-6 is granted. Moving on to Appointments. Madam Chairwoman, we have six, I guess, of the eight folks that were present.
Yes, Mr. Congressman.
And do you have a report on the six that, I assume we're going to, are we going to further time the two that didn't show up?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe we should take care of that first.
Okay.
And I'll let you make a recommendation on that.
Okay, so my recommendation would be to further time the measure confirming Luis Massa to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit volunteer, and Iaz Ahmed for the Office of Emergency Management volunteer.
Okay, I'll check with your committee. Counselor Frida?
I agree with that.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to further time the appointments of Louis Massa and Iaz Ahmed. All those in favor of further time for those two interviews, please say yea. Yea?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the appointments of Louis Massa and Iaz Ahmed have been further timed. Does the chairwoman have a report on the other six individuals?
I do, Mr. President. We had Jason Reagan, Harry Quarles, Darlene Quarles, Lisa Delorme, Marcy Rothenberg, and Pamela Sullivan call in this evening, and they were all interviewed, kind of en masse, but also as individually as we could make it. There is a great mixture of experience, volunteerism, and enthusiasm for this position, and we are more than grateful that they have decided to step up and help the City of Leominster especially in times like these. So my recommendation would be to confirm their appointment to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Counselor Frida?
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment. the appointments of Jason Reagan, Harry Quarles, Darlene Quarles, Lisa Delorme, Marcy Rothenberg, and Pamela Sullivan, Sullivan, to the Emergency Management Operations Unit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini? Counselor Angelini?
Yay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The confirmations of Jason Reagan, Harry Quarles, Darlene Quarles, Lisa Delorme, Marcy Rothenberg, and Pamela Sullivan, to the Emergency Management Operations Unit have been confirmed. Moving on to C dash eight, does the chairwoman have a report?
I do, Mr. President. C dash eight, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the attached list of individuals be appointed as elections officers. Term to expire August first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we do have, uh, a list. Um, it is, uh, well over a hundred, uh, people. At the, um, the city clerk has done a wonderful job in vetting and also keeping election officers, especially during, uh, this year, when we have, um, it's the early write-ins for the primary, um, the mail-ins, I mean, for the primary. So if anybody, if any of the public would like to see the list, it is on file in the city clerk's office. And in the meantime, my recommendation would be that we confirm the appointment of these election officers. And I would ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I, I agree, but I would ask that we, that the clerk published the names on, um, the city website, so that people could just see who, who was on by looking at the site.
I would assume, Madam Clerk, that that's no problem, right?
No problem.
Okay, very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good suggestion, Counselor Frida. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just right now, people aren't, uh, really in a hurry to come into City Hall or do anything they don't have to do too far, so...
Yep. No, I agree with that one hundred percent. That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Uh, Counselor Dombrowski?
Uh, I'm in accord.
All right. You've heard the MS recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C dash eight. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C dash eight is granted. Moving on to C dash nine, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash nine, D. J. Mazarella, Mayor, request the following changes for approval for the Lemmonster Police Department Building Committee. And we did receive a, uh, communication from the mayor dated July twenty-second. Dear members of the city council, I respectfully submit the following changes for approval for the Lemmonster Police Department Building Committee. Mayor D. Mazarella, Counselor Claire Frida, Chief Aaron Kennedy, replacing Chief Michael Goldman, Lieutenant Mark Amico, Sergeant Daniel Priety, Kelly Valley, replacing Patrolman Daniel Contoy, Sergeant James Moroys, replacing Patrolman Michael Wayne, Kelly Gamble, Wendy Weeks, Greg Chaplain, Officer Brett Thompson, replacing William Mitchell, James Whitney, Henry Frye, Patrick Bacardi, James Lanziani, Officer Carlos Centron, replacing Robert Gudziski, Michelle Richards, Neighborhood Represent, Representative addition. And, um, Mr. President, I, uh, would, uh, say that we should approve the thought, the changes for the Lemmonster Police Department Building Committee, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
Uh, Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from this vote, saying I'm one of the members.
Okay, very well, understood. And I will check with Counsel Dombrowski.
I'm in agreement.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the, uh, participating members of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C dash nine. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counsel Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley, did I get your vote?
I believe so. I said yay.
Okay, okay, just checking. I'm losing my mind a little bit here this hour. And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. C dash nine is granted. Moving on to six dash twenty-one, the election order. Um, are we gonna have the clerk read that first, Counselor, um, Feckley?
We, we will. I'll just read it. A six twenty-one election order, an order relative to the state primaries September first, two thousand and twenty. And indeed, the clerk has graciously agreed to read said order.
Very well.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, City of Lemmonster, election order for presidential, um, excuse me, state primary, September first, two thousand and twenty. Voted, the meeting of the citizens of this city qualified to vote in the state primary shall be held on Tuesday, the first day of September, two thousand and twenty, from seven A M. to eight P M. For the purpose of casting their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices: Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, Second District, Counselor, Seventh District, Senator in General Court, Worcester Middlesex District, Representative in General Court, Fourth Worcester District, Register of Probate, Worcester District. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the city council: Ward one, Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way; Ward one, Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way; Ward one, Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way; Ward two, Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Iskaloide Avenue; Ward two, Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Iskaloide Avenue; Ward two, Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Iskaloide Avenue; Ward three, Precinct A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street; Ward three, Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street; Ward three, Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street; Ward four, Precinct A, Junior Citizens Drop-In Center, five Pond Street; Ward four, Precinct C, Lemmonster Veterans Center, one hundred West Street; Ward four, Precinct C, Lemmonster Veterans Center, one hundred West Street; Ward five, Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street; Ward five, Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street; Ward five, Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Lemmonster, twenty-three West Street. Hear, feel, not, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, which will be today's date, with the city council of Lemmonster's, um, senators. And then will be posted in the public places as follows: City Hall, Veterans Center, Police Department, Fire Station, Library, Recreation Department, D. P. W., School Department, Cemetery Department, Waste Water Treatment Plant, Emergency Management, Monotuse and Opportunity Council, Spanish American Center, and the Post Office. And it will be posted by August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty by a constable.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I'm ready to finish your report.
Thank you. So my recommendation would be that we approve the election order as read, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree with that.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation to approve petition six dash twenty-one, the election order, uh, relative to the state primaries on September first, two thousand and twenty. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Thomas Arndinger?
Yay.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Six dash twenty-one is granted. We have no new, old, new business listed or old business listed. Do we have anything under the community calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Counselor Frida. I just think for, uh, point of clarity, I've had a number of people call. Um, I'm not sure why. I think just because of all the state discussion, um, looking to see whether we were gonna have Starburst or Johnny Appleseed Festival, and I believe they've both been canceled. But if that's the case, I think we should be telling the public that, so that there's no question about it anymore.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's a, that's probably not a bad thing to let people know. Um, um, there's no question, I believe, on Starburst. Um, I haven't talked to former Councilor Marshand about Johnny Appleseed. I know the last time I talked to him, that was greatly curtailed, but that was before the governor's most recent order. Um, so I, I would, you know, give him the courtesy of, um, chiming in. It goes to some point, I can find out, uh, what the, uh, updated, uh, um, information is with respect to the Johnny Appleseed fair. Uh, obviously, I, I suspect if it was going to be conducted, it would be, um, a very small version of its prior self. But I will, I'll get that information for the next meeting. But Starburst is definitely officially canceled.
Right. And, and, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not looking for Councilor Marshand to say anything. I just think if he does have a decision, it'd be a good idea to tell people. If not, then, you know, it'd be a good idea to tell people there's still some hope for it. So...
All right. I'll get a report for the next meeting. Anything else under the, um, community calendar? All right. Um, hearing none. Um, unless there's any objection, um, are we all in favor of adjournment? All those, uh, all those in favor of adjournment, please say yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, all. Happy, stay safe, and have a good rest of your week. Night.
Thank you, Mark. Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.